That better?
Can you see the presentation on Zoom?
I can, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Anthony Filaro, Chair of the Planning Board. We have a quorum present. I want to welcome Megan Runyon. Can you hear me, Megan?
I can. I'm so sorry I'm not there in person. I am terribly sick this morning, so. But I'm happy to be here this way. So, thank you for the warm welcome.
I'm glad you are. Hopefully, you'll be at other meetings when your schedule permits. But we have a seven-member group now. So the presence is noteworthy in the sense of participating and being aware of issues. But as far as voting tonight, if anything happens, Mike Wallace is an alternate, and he'll be filling that capacity as far as a seven-member board. I just want to let you know.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. First order of business, folks. Minutes from the meeting, December 6th, that was our last meeting. It dealt with the apartment complex on Spring Street. If you've reviewed them, if you haven't already. And once someone is ready, I need a motion to accept them or amend them.
Motion to accept as written.
A motion was made by Tom Malcolm to accept the minutes as written. Mike Wallace seconded the motion.
I'd like to comment on that, Tony.
Yes, please, John.
At that meeting, I had abstained from voting, but it wasn't recorded such. I'd like to have that corrected.
All right, that'll be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that'll be entered into the minutes of this meeting to indicate at that meeting on December 6th, that you did not abstain from voting, and it indicated in the minutes that you were part of the vote that was taken. So noted. Thank you. Any other comments on the minutes from December 6th? Anybody want more time? We're not in a rush, but. Want to rush it, want to stay. Stay static. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion to accept the minutes as amended? So moved. Any opposition to the minutes? Seeing none, unanimous. Thank you. The meeting tonight is to review a site application for a new airport terminal building to be constructed, obviously at the airport, in roughly the footprint of the existing building, but not necessarily in the same dimensions, and increasing the size of the parking lot. Mr. Patrick Santara is here tonight to discuss this project, and I'd like to open things up to him to allow him to discuss the project. I already mentioned, excuse me, to Mr. Santara, that the planning board is interested in the footprint of the building and the area to be developed. The size, not size, but the qualities of the building with features, they'll have things of that nature. That's of interest to the community, though that might come up tonight. But as far as our review of this project, really the footprint of the building, where it is, and the size of the parking lot. But what might be discussed than what I'm indicating. All right, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Tony, for inviting us to come tonight. My partner is Sussbard, and we, our company's Arcadia Design Works. I'm originally from Melanocke. I left the state, got a degree in architecture and other things, came back to Maine, and have since opened a second office in Melanocke. We reside predominantly in Portland, but we had an opportunity to purchase a building in Melanocke, which was. It's been a love-hate, you know. Buying an older building in Melanocke, it takes a lot of effort to get it back up to, to, you know, code compliance, let's say, let alone rentable space. Anyway, so I'm back in Melanocke and very fortunate to have been able to, through our company, study the airport, broad airport, and look at how we could potentially build a new terminal building that would be a lot with additional amenities than what's currently existing, the FBO building. And as a fixed base operation building, it served its purpose. It's been there, Jeff, since 1950s, late 40s. And, you know, just quickly, just because it is the planning board, I think, just a little brief history. We went to the Historical Society to see, was there any photographs of the old airport? And we did find a document from one of the early attorneys in Melanocke that documented the pay that was, the payments that were made to, or the town expenditures on the airport when it first opened back in the 30s, I think. And a lot of interesting information from these pay wrecks. The Great Northern basically sold the land to the town for like a dollar or a certain. I think it was incremental, but they also provided coal ash for the early runways. Our geotech did not discover coal ash where the FBO building is, but we can only imagine that under the runways is a coal ash that came from the former paper mill. So there's, it's an interesting site. There's a lot, there's a lot more that we could talk about in terms of the geotechnical aspects, but I think important would be just to get into the planning of the site. And the way we approach any project in wherever we work, be it in southern Maine or in north-central Maine, is we look at the environment, we look at the community, we look at the people. What are we looking to achieve? How is it going to benefit the community as a whole? And there's, this first image shows a couple datums or axes that are hugely important for this community. And one is Malkataden and the runway. Oh, that's good. That's fine. And the runway, so there's a couple datums that also are instrumental for the layout of the building. If you go to the site plan, which is the next one. If I went up there to point, could you still hear me?
Okay. All right. So. So originally, originally when you start design, we, looking at Medway Road as being an axis of the building, and then the runway, which was to generate the, sort of generate the walls of the building. So if we had the two different angles, it would create some interest in the building. So architecturally, that's what we were looking for, beyond the program. And the program we know existed was, we had, we had the FBO, we had the offices, we had the lunch area, we had the weather. FAA had space, there's the weather station space. So we knew what was existing in the current FBO building. And when the Sustainability Committee came to us and said, "We would like to, we would like this new building to be, to provide greater amenities to the community." And so in that regard, we looked at an event center. So how could we, how could we bring in, how could we create a space that would be potentially leasable space for anything from weddings to conferences to just general meetings, and a collaboration space? So there's a lot of different spaces in the building that we can show you. We don't have a floor plan in this presentation, but it's in this location right here is where the building is. Obviously, there's the manager's office and assistant manager. We have a collaboration space, which is a conference room, and we have a pilot's planning area. We have a shower for the pilots, we have restrooms, mechanical systems. All of the things that would help keep this building as low cost in its energy usage as possible. So the way, there were some other items that needed to happen. This is the existing entrance to the FBO or the terminal building. There's an existing commercial building that Jeff was able to get funding for to house the snow blower, which is amazing. If you ever get a chance to see that blowing snow, I'd recommend it. It's really, it's really amazing. But with that equipment, there was a plow that was, is it 16 feet? 18-foot plow, but the current gate is only 16 feet. So he's not been able to utilize this plow to plow the runways. So you have to use the regular dump truck with a smaller plow. So when we, as architects, we have, okay, what are the list of things you must have? And then let's see what else we could add that would be helpful for the whole project. So we have, in between the town hangar, we have a 24-foot drive and then a 20-foot gate. So he'll be able to, will be able to move any piece of equipment in and out of the runway and the parking lot area. So if you were coming to, if you were coming to the airport, you'd most likely enter here. We would like to have a sort of a one-way. Well, actually, it's two-way. We have a two-way. But ideally, we'd like you to come in this way, and, or actually, I think people are going to come in this way because you're going to want to park close to the building. So you come in this way, you park on this side here. We have a couple handicap spaces. The thing that's important to note in this building is that, early on, he said, "Let's see if we can get an air carrier." And when we say air carrier, we're not looking at a TWA or, you know, a Delta. We're looking at a Cape Air, which has a jet with nine passengers. If you're from Melanocke, or if you've been in Melanocke, you know the history. Continental used to fly into Melanocke back in the 60s, I think it was. There was actually passenger service to Melanocke. Of course, there was a mill to help support that as well. So the idea was, if we could get a passenger carrier like Cape Air, which is subsidized by the FAA, and help, correct me if I get my facts wrong here. The, we, it's not, it can be self-sufficient, where it supports itself, where it isn't a burden to the community to have a carrier. It would actually generate revenue. So if we can get a carrier, Cape Air, we have a baggage area, and then we would also would like to look into the idea of having a TSA where they do a security check. It would be similar to Augusta's airport, which has a very small, modest microwave or x-ray machine for your baggage and the person going in, and then a waiting area. So if we're able to secure that in the building, a carrier, then we would have a, we'd have a drop-off area right here. So that's, this is a kind of a dedicated drop-off area for people coming and going into the airport. If we're not able to, in, you know, short term, then those could also be additional parking spaces in front. If that space in the building that maybe we can eventually talk about is not used for an air carrier or TSA, then we can utilize that space for something else to be determined. So the other thing that needs to be noted in terms of the parking area is when, is the building, we're looking to do a geothermal system, and the wells are either somewhere out on the north side of the building or on the east side. And then we'll have, the geothermal has heat exchange system in the south side of the building. We're looking to put a photovoltaic wall on the south that would help power the motors and the pumps for the system, and also add electricity for additional apparel, you know, equipment if possible. And then we're back up with a pellet boiler. So if we have a backup pellet boiler, the mechanical room is in that location. We would need a pellet, a 53-foot truck to be able to back in and then pump their pellets into a flex silo that's inside the building. So that's the, that's the current plan. If the truck, the truck could also drive in this way and then unload with their pump from the side as well. Things we have to be, we have to be careful about or cognizant of is that we have a communication tower that's right here, and then we have weather equipment there, which Jeff is trying to get relocated on the airport site away from the building because currently it's too close to the, it's improperly, it's not, it's a little bit too close to the building. So. So then, so then let's say, let's say Senator Collins or Senator King comes to Melanocke and wants to talk about something going on at one Katahdin or some other project in town, or just want to see, you know, what everyone's up to. They could come to this building and then, you know, you have parking, and we have parking for roughly 38 per the zoning ordinance in Melanocke. We have 38 parking spaces, and should an event get, you know. We, the other aspect of this is our building, there's so much information to convey. The water line or on Medway Road stops at the hydrant here. And we don't have a residual pressure that would enable us to put a sprinkler system in the building without having storage tanks and/or replace the pipe in the road or connect that, or make a loop. If we can make a loop, then that would be, we'd get greater, better pressure. So in terms of fire codes, national fire protection, we have to keep the occupancy of the building below 300 occupants, so.
Patrick, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
Couldn't you put in a, like a booster pump that may help with your water issue?
You can do a booster pump, but you need a tank for storage. And so what we're, unless, so the project right now is, we're close to getting it to an estimator to see what the cost of the whole project would be. We've not talked about doing a tank storage with a booster pump. Totally understand that that's a feasible option. It's a little bit, we haven't pursued a sprinkler company to say, "What would that cost? Does it increase the cost of the project considerably? Do we have the space for it?" The tank would probably have to be inside, so it's not freezing in winter. So it's a good question, and quite honest with you, we haven't really explored it beyond just keeping our occupancy below 300. And to be honest with you, too, we have to be careful here because Jeff is the person. We got one person manning this airport terminal. And already, we've got much, we have a lot more bathrooms. We have more bathrooms. We have a bigger building to clean and take care of. So unless the town has, unless we have, like, is there's a, already 44,000 dollars for fuel, jet fuel sales? If we can keep on that trajectory as a community at this airport, this is our aviation gateway to the Katahdin region. This is the first thing people from around the world can see if they fly into town. And, yeah.
I'm Celeste. I think the other thing to keep in mind and the interest in looking at the event center is just the opportunities it can bring this community, for yourselves, for your family, for people to rent these spaces, to have events there, and that can generate real revenue. So it's an investment that can pay off, but it needs to be, you know, it needs to be made. So that was the goal in doing this, and sort of let's dream a little bit. It's, we're trying to make the building big enough, but not too big, where you hit all these other requirements and hoop jumping. But then where it also is going to create enough opportunity to, you know, for people to be excited about. I mean, it's a gorgeous view, it's beautiful sunsets, there's so much about the property that has so much going for it. So it's really a gift to the community, and why not celebrate it by putting in a nice building that can be used as a multi-space area? And we try to make things flexible, so it's not just single use, right? Because the community's needs will change over time, and so we try to design that way.
I think it's also important to note is that we had a project, we were working on a factory building down in Sanford, and it's adjacent to the Sanford Airport. And in our dealings with that manufacturer, because when you're built near the airport, if you have to bring a crane onsite, you have to notify the FAA, and they give you permission as to the times that you could actually use the crane next to an airport. So in that process, I got to meet the manager at the Sanford Airport, and really lovely lady, she was involved with the airport at Hancock County. So if you go to Bar Harbor, if you ever fly in there, that's a fairly new building. And they have Cape Air, and it's, obviously, they have the draw from Bar Harbor, but it's a viable model for passenger service out of Cape Air at Hancock. Anyway, so this woman, can't remember her name, but she said, "Oh, you should go check out the Sanford Airport." So I did. You go to the Sanford Airport, there's a cafe there, there's a restaurant and a deck where you can have a hamburger and a beer and watch the planes come and go, or just sit and, you know, have a meal at the airport. It's a really great amenity. And so our comment, no, we don't have that, we don't have a restaurant, but we do have an event center, and it has a breakout area where it has a view terrace. So you could sit outside and see planes come and go undercover when the bugs aren't out. But, yeah, so like if you had a wedding, for instance, you could have, you know, you could have a, you could have seating outside as well as inside. We've set up the event center that you'd have tables and chairs, so it could be, you could have a conference. You could, I'm getting, we're getting into the weeds of the interior of the building. But I think in terms of the site, this is a new entrance here. We don't have to talk to, we don't have to communicate with the MDEP because this is town, town land. We just need the public works permission to put what they call a curb cut. Our grade is very low here, so we do want to be able to have the drainage come to the Medway Road, which is where the predominant slope is. The soils reports was, we have a high silt content, so we will want to do foundation drainage. So we do want to try to have it drained to the low point, which is over in that area there. Other than that, I mean, we will check, we have started looking at the impervious surface percentage, but we have 340 acres and about, I don't know what the, I don't know how many square feet that is, but it's in the millions, and we have about a million of impervious surface now with the runway. So we just, we'll be doing our next due diligence with the MDEP and the MDOT. Just, MDOT would be to let them know that we're working on this project. MDEP will just confirm that we don't have to submit, you know, lots of paperwork to get approval for this. Because it is a minor, it's a really minor development. It's not like we're expanding the airport building by, you know, multiple scale. Basically, just we're fencing around, fencing around, and then we will have some landscaping in the front of the building. We don't want it just to be asphalt and concrete. And aside from that, we have a 50-foot distance that we need to maintain. There's a circle up there that's the fuel hydrant. The building FAA requires a 50-foot distance to the building, and that's what we're holding. And we sloped the building pretty much in one direction to keep majority of the stormwater to the north. And we'll have to, well, there's no great, there's not, the grading has been done yet. Haley Ward has, we're like at 75% construction documents right now. So that's why we wanted to get price before we finished the drawings for the construction. And then we could start looking into funding the project. We do also need to relocate the helicopter pad. It is, I think, Jeff, is it over here somewhere? Just about right here is the helicopter landing, and it's too close to the parking, so.
The helicopter part of it is all part of my rebuilding of the ramp. We're going to do another overhaul of the parking apron. That's part of my CIP process, and it's going to move the helipad into the infield, so it's not going to be an issue. The helipad isn't a sanctioned one anyway. It's really just the old base of the old municipal hangar that was there before.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, there's a lot of concrete pads interspersed around here from past buildings that were, you know, Jeff might know what they are, but we just haven't identified on the drawing. I think it's important to note, too, that this is, this is, this would be like the first building, well, since you built the other building, this is the first new building in years in town that would be from scratch, let's say, versus a renovation. And there's, it sounds like there's a lot of potential for land sales along the Medway Road for further economic development for the community. So if we have a good building for them to come to in many different ways, then hopefully it generates more businesses coming to Melanocke associated with aviation. And then we will have a sign. We have to have a sign. And we're thinking, we would like it to be associated with the region. So Katahdin Regional Airport would probably be more conducive to bringing in Medway and East Melanocke and the neighboring communities that don't have their own airports, that we serve the whole community, the whole region. So that would be kind of a branding exercise for the signage as well. And any lights that we use, we know we need to keep the parking lot well illuminated at night for night events, but we would like to keep with the dark sky if possible, where the lighting is down to prevent a light wash beyond the airport. I think it's really important, especially for the neighboring community, neighboring houses and residences. Yeah, we have other slides, and we can get more into the building if you want, but. Yeah.
I got a question. What's the dimensions of the building itself? And. My name is David Lebec. Just a citizen here in Melanocke. I'm interested in the dimensions of the building and the dimensions of the event center and the dimensions of actually the physical terminal part, whether it be a commercial site. Have you got any dimensions for that, or?
So in architecture school, they teach you to do a grid first. Start with a grid, and then you can, you make things simple. So we started with a grid that was 60 feet by 100 feet. And as 60 feet and 100 feet, we, I mean, we literally started with the entrance over here, and then we realized, no, it'd be better if it was in the center because Jeff really needs to be at a position where he can see, potentially see people coming and going. We may need a camera for some of that. So we started with the 60 feet. Like I said, we also started with these, the Medway Road axis, and then the axis to the runway to generate the form of the walls for the building to create some interest. The building interior is around 5,500 square feet. So you add, and it's not, it's not a very big building, quite honest with you. And we've packed a lot of punch in this building. There is a second floor because we have a high, we wanted to do a monoslope so that it just, all of the stormwater went to one side, away from the parking, away from the people. And by doing that, it's cost-effective, first of all, and two, it does create a, I should show, can I, should I show? Yeah. If you want to, Matthew, if you want to, just, yeah, go forward. Yeah, so here's the, yeah, so there's the existing FBO. Yeah, and then you can, oh, wait, actually, I'm sorry, go back. And obviously, the part of the reason to. Go back. And, and obviously the, the, the part of the reason to replace this building is, is Louis Pelletier, for instance, can't go in this building unless he has assistance. So this, it's non, it's not ADA accessible. And, and it's, and it's probably has, you know, luckily three and a half inches of fiberglass insulation. It's probably absorbed enough moisture that's now not really serving a whole lot of, so it's, it's time. It really is time. Um, so if you go to the next, the next image, this is the program. These are, these are the rooms that we generate the floor plan from. And then we look at the size of the room, we multiply it by factors that are associated with the National Fire, uh, National NFPA Fire Protection Association. And we're, we're hovering around two eighty-nine. This number's changed a little bit because we had a meeting with the fire, state fire marshal a couple of weeks ago. And um, the previous fire marshal said that our viewing area had to have part of the calculation. And they just told us, as long as we don't put a gate at the aisle, at the entrance, that would be considered outside the building and they, we wouldn't have to calculate it as occupancy. So that enables us to lower that number as a, in a safe manner to hopefully, if the TSA space isn't a TSA space immediately, then we could, you know, use that space for a different function. So if we go to the next slide, um, this was the presentation we gave to the Sustainability Committee. Um, so sixteen, is it sixteen thirty-four runway? Yeah. So this runway right here almost is in line with Katanen. It's slightly to the west of Katanen. So we, you know, so that's, this is our, and we're, and if we, and, and we need the two runways. So it's really important that we, um, this, and this, this area here, Jeff, is this, this is the, this is the land that's potentially, he's already got a cut. So he's rocking and rolling. You guys got, you get, the town has a great manager here, I have to say. Hold on to him. Okay, the next, next image. There's a few things that I want, that, okay, so here's, this is the, this is an old, this is an old site plan where we were having the pellet boiler going in the back and that's, that's since passed. So, um, this is old, but if you keep going. Oh, I do have a floor plan. Sorry. Probably should have put this up earlier. So you enter in here, you've got a kitchen to your left, uh, utility closet, vending machines here, uh, your men's and women's room, you have a all gender restroom and a shower for pilots. Uh, this is your mechanical, electrical, mostly, mostly mechanicals, because we move the electrical closer to the, to the power pole. You, you enter here, if you want to go to a meeting like this, if we wanted to hold this meeting in a conference room, we could just come in here and that door, and we don't even have to go into the main, main building. That's potentially rentable space or leasable space. There's the pilot's lounge. And on the end is a flex room. We call it flex room because we're not sure whether that, that could be a rented space, could be an office, or it could be a business associated with aviation. Um, so you come in, you have a lobby. This is a sliding, sliding glass door here that enables you to go right into the event center and or the lobby right here. And, and then over here, you have your south entrance. You have a retail s- space that's, um, where, where Jeff's, where, with the oils and charts are sold. This is now, this is an electrical closet over here, assistant manager and the manager's office here. The, um, so the event center. So if I came in and I wanted to fly to Boston, let's say, on Cape Air, we would come in here, we check in at the airline counter, then we'd go through, I may, maybe we, obviously you don't need, wow. If we, if we did an international flight, um, do, yeah. Okay. Yeah. And, and, well, so, so then you go, you, you check in here and you have a waiting area here and then you exit to the plane at that location. The baggage is over here and then when a flight arrives, it comes through this portal here, through the flight, and then you're into the lobby here. So if you're in a, if you're in an event right here and there's a breakout session, there's a door here and there's your terrace on the outside up there. Um, and then this window here is just your picture window of Mount Katanen. And then there's, this is a covered walkway right here where you, where, where you drive up and you, and you enter. So if you wanna forward, next one. And that's the second level. So when you come up the stairs, we have a mezzanine office space, also leasable space. And then to the far right is your mechanical equipment, which would be your air exchangers for the geothermal and the photovoltaic is on that wall to the right of that. Next slide. This is the building, as Jeff would say, from the front, which is the runway, uh, the ramp of view. So if you get off a plane, the airport side. So if you get off, you enter through this entrance here into the building. Uh, this is a garage door for baggage, um, and that's the waiting area and that's the airport manager's office. This is the wall right here with a beautiful south, south exposure for a photovoltaic, photo, you know, uh, array for generating electricity. Next slide. Uh, this is on the north view. There's the terrace there and the window to Katanen. Uh, next slide. So one thing that we, um, we told, we, we gave this presentation to the Sustainability Committee. I've, we, when we come into Melanocat, there's this phenomenon that I've been researching and trying to figure out why. Why is the mountain so large at this location on one fifty-seven? And there's this, I've done research that states that maybe it's the curvature of the earth, because the curvature of the earth creates this convex lens that maybe magnifies things in the distance. Leonardo da Vinci talked about the harvest moon, about how that's large when it comes up over the horizon. All the papers that I've read, pretend, you know, any, any scientific paper I've read says as much, it has something to do with the perspective. It has something to do with the aperture. It's our, it's all in here. It's in our brain. It's not, they're saying it's not real. It's just in our head. But at the end of the paper, they'll say, but we still don't know why. There's still so much that we don't know why this phenomenon happens. Cause when you, when you drive four hundred and fifty feet to Dobie Empoundment and turn, turn the, the, turn the corner, I don't know if I have that slide. The mountain is, is, it, it goes back to micro. It goes from macro to micro. And, and it, and so that phenomena, we would like to capture in the building. And so that the, the event center is, is, the walls are tapered, the roof is tapered to that window. So we're hoping that just with the use of the architecture of the building, that mountain's gonna become larger than what we would, it would be. Yeah. You know, it, it's, it's something that we're studying. We'd like to be able to include it in the building. That's, that's, that's what I, I get excited about, that kind of stuff architecturally. Yeah, right, right. Well, and, and a friend of ours, he says up in Alaska at the Denali, at the visitor center, at the, uh, at the park up, the national park up in Alaska, on the glasses that it's, it's etched in the glass, the profile of the mountain, the Denali mountain. And when you step back, it, the, the profile, you know, the mountain gets bigger and the profile gets smaller. When you get, get closer to the profile, so, so you keep walking back and forth until you line yourself up with the mountain. I don't know if we, we wouldn't wanna do that, but um, if you go to the next slide. So, so, um, so Dick Angotti enabled, he said, here, you know, why don't you go up to the sludge pile and see if you can figure out if there's another perspective that you can see the mountain where it shows you why it's so big. And so we made this aperture and it's very, it's very, uh, it's kind of very, it's, it's dark. I mean, you can't see it, cause, but the mountain is right, like right there. And so the, the thinking is, is if there was, if there was a picture of the roads on this cardboard, would that mountain be bigger than what we would perceive it as being? So we're still doing some kind, we're, we're, we're putting on our, our white smock, science, science coats right now to try to figure out why is this, and we should be taking advantage of that. We could have a sign out on one fifty-seven saying this phenomena happened, is, is very unique to this region of the world. Um, and, and it, and it would bring people to town just to experience that on a, on a clear day. So I'd, we'd like to increase the size of this. This is not that big in our office. So, next slide. Yes, there, so there's the mountain, a little bit clearer. So next, next slide. So, and, and so this is one of the, one of the scientific explanations. This is the effing, effing, effing ha- Haas uh, diagram, basically saying if you have the same objects, the same size, but if you have big juxtap, you know, if you have adjacencies that are bigger, it will look smaller. And if adjacencies are smaller, it'll look bigger. I don't think it's always, I don't think that's exactly the explanation for Mount Katanen being so big on, on that view, but I think it has something to do with it. At Quitsin Italy, we met the pilot for, uh, the guy, the butler guy, the guy who did the, 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 um, east branch uh, facility, Pop, Penobscot River Branch thing. And, and we met him, we met him down in Cutler, cause the guy's doing the same thing down in, down East Maine. And I told him about, we were doing the new airport terminal in Melanocat. He goes, oh, that's really cool. He says, can I see, you know, I'd like to show Mr. Butler and, and, um, and he goes, and I told him about this. And he goes, oh, that's really interesting. Says, let me know, give me your address, cause I was a neuroscientist at McGill University. And he sent us his research on optical illusions. And so we've pulled from that some additional information on why the mountain is the way it is. Next, next image. So this is, this was, this was what Da Vinci was talking about, was the curvature of the earth creates a, a lens that creates this larger object on the horizon. I don't think it's true because it's just not far enough, or I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, I haven't found the research that would prove this. So that's another, another lifetime, I think. Uh, next image. So this is inside the building. This is the event center here, a section. Cross-section, yeah. So if you, if you cut a cross-section through the entrance here and you go in, and that would be the, um, that would be the event center there. And Jeff has been generous to offer to donate some of his model airplanes that we would like to hang from the ceiling in the lobby. Or if the TSA doesn't come through immediately, maybe we just, Jeff's just gonna be mad at me after this. Maybe we have a model airplane museum until we get an airline carrier in. That would draw people to come to Melanocat. I know Owl's Head is, has a, a draw for, for tourists at their museum. So let's go to the next one. This is when you're in the lobby, you're looking down the hallway to the re- the restrooms. This is the kitchen here. This is the conference room. And that's your event center and then the door that would go uh, to the flight re- entry when you're, when you're coming in from a flight. Next one. Uh, and that's the uh, outside on the deck terrace. Yeah.
You know, we did a virtual reality walk this building. We put the goggles on and we walked through the building and it's simply amazing how much stuff is put into a sixty by a hundred building. I mean, it's just simply amazing how much can be done with that building. There's a lot of, lot of different areas.
And like, so for instance, we, the other forest center who's been instrumental for uh, updating some houses in Melanocat and has a presence in Melanocat has, um, has, um, provided an, an additional grant money for the engineers and our team to study mass timber for this building. And so C L T, cross laminated timber is the buzzword that a lot of, you hear a lot of these days. The unfortunate thing is, is only two major factories that we're aware of in the U S and the, and the rest are in Canada. If this is a federally funded project, we're, we're, we have to, we have to try to use domestic product as much as we can. So, but what we would like to do is we'd like to do a C L T cross laminated timber roof structure, which integrates the beam and the purlins and the deck itself. And that would be an all exposed wood, wood ceiling. We're doing glue lamb beam columns and we're doing, we would like to use a cedar siding on some of the building and a brick, a red brick to kind of hark back to the mills, mill, age of the mill. And then, um, um, a metal siding that, um, in the red, red family to match the buildings that are onsite. Um, so we'd like to use a lot of wood if possible. And we'd like to use as much local, if, if we can get wood out of Maine, that would be great. We can certainly get, you know, buildings, you know, studs and stuff like that. But the cedar, white, red cedar on the west coast is better than the white cedar in Maine. So we might look at a red cedar. Um, there's a variety of, we're, we're still looking at the outside because we want this to be low maintenance, like the pool building, the, the bath house that we designed in two thousand and six. There is some staining that you need to do, but with concrete block, it's been kind of a, a low maintenance building for the town. If you go to the next, next slide. We also did some research on the thermal, this is a thermal uh, test module that's, you can drive by the airport terminal right now and see it. Basically, it's a, it's a six by six box. There's a polycarbonate window here. Go to, go to the next image. So inside the, the, inside the module is a cementitious panel. And during the day, the sun hits it and heats that panel up. And the panel, it's, it's, it's a, it's trom wall technology. Trom wall is a thick masonry wall, concrete wall that heats up in the, in the, in the daytime and then radiates into the space at night. That's passive. Uh, this is more active where it's a thermal siphon, where it would absorb the heat of the solar, of the sun. And through fin coils, we would uh, pump water, glycol water into the building to then heat the, exchange the heat or heat the space. When we had, uh, we had data loggers, our engineers put data loggers in the box. And on the days that were like under, like thirty degree days, we had a hundred and seventy-five degrees inside the box. So we had about a hundred and forty degree te- delta, temperature delta that we could utilize that temperature. Unfortunately, we, we, we wanna keep developing this if possible, but for the building, for the airport building, it may not be as feasible with the geothermal. Primarily because if it's, it's a, it's a, it's a shoulder season winter technology. Comes July, June, July, August, we would have to shutter, we'd have to have shades to, to prevent it from heating up. So we're, we've, we've also spoke to Efficiency Maine and Efficiency Maine is really excited about this. They would like us to further this uh, technology. This actually exists at the National Guard Building, Alan, uh, at the airport in Bangor. Uh, it's a, it's just a solar heat, um, um, system that heats up the, that heats up air. Um, but I think we're, for us, it, this building, we probably would be better, better off not trying to do new technologies at this stage of the game, but go with photovoltaic, which then we know is a tried and true technology that we could power the power, power the pumps and the, and the motors of, of the geothermal system. So if you go to the next one. Um, yeah, so that's, that module was this size right here and that was, it was to give us some reading as to how much heat we were gaining on the building, or could, could actually absorb, you know, get for the building. Next image. So there's the, the, the three systems that we're looking to use, geothermal, wood pellet system and a photovoltaic system. Next one. And then finally, I have to sort of, sort of relay that we, we did a slope gradient study of Mount Katanen. And your, is it, I always get turned around. Knife edge is on the east side when you're looking at the mountain. So this would be the hunt down to Katanen stream. So that west slope of Katanen is right around nine degrees, nine, nine point something. Next slide. And that's what we're using for the slope of our building. So we can say that that's our, that's the, that's the west slope of Katan. Next. And then, you know, so like if we have a, an event going on like the Iraq. We could have a banner out in the front and say, you know, get people, draw people into the, to the event. Next. That's it. Okay.
That's good. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation there, Patrick. Let me ask, are there any questions from members of the planning board?
Yeah, I have a question, John. Uh, I'm confused about the event center. Is there a plan of managing the event center or is that just something that would? The space would be there and it would be. Open to the public to to manage or how would that be? What is the plan for that?
That's a good question.
The event center would be a rental basis. It'll, it would be utilized during the day for our normal crowd that comes through. There'll be tables out there when. You know, there's a fair, fair coffee crowd that comes out there in the mornings. Be utilized for that when it's not being utilized for an event. And if the event is happening, then that'll be up to the people that rent the event center. There's going to be a, a good size, uh, well appointed kitchen there that if somebody's catering, they can warm their food or. Or, um, serve their stuff so that the event center will be. Managed by me or whoever the manager ends up being eventually. Uh, managed by me, but rented out as a rental space and there'll be a contract where. You know, it has to be left in the way it was and there'd be all those details, but it'll be handled by the town, be handled by myself. Does that answer it, John?
That is, that is an answer. My only concern is, uh. The idea of event center, there's a couple of different events that is. Being built in town or utilized in town right now. And they don't have, uh, public money to finance them, you know, and I, I'm just wondering about the. The fairness of the competition. And I don't have any concerns about it, but if anybody in town comes up with concerns about that, I'd kind of like to hear them. Thank you.
Yeah, good, good point, but I don't think the planning board is going to get involved. And then if someone wishes to respond, please do.
Mr. Flora, I could jump in for a moment.
Yep.
You know, I think the, the aim for that is more the. Corporate or business level retreats or conferences, we really don't have a location in town at this point. Suitable for those type of events. Uh, that would be kind of the number one market for, for that space if we were to. Um, go forward with the construction of this building. So I, I don't see it being any sort of competition with local amenities.
And I, I could add, I could add to that where one of our FAA consultants is out of Littleton, New Hampshire. And he, um, he brought up an example of in Littleton, they have. There was three corporate jets from Scott, for instance, the Miracle Grow, the company that's in Medway. They, they flew three jets into, I don't know if it was Littleton or, or somewhere Concord in New Hampshire. For, uh, overnight, basically a, a conference or it was a getaway for their corporate, you know, staff, and then the next day they flew back out. That is one of, you know, I mean, that's, I think it's a good point. What, what Peter brought up is it, it. I think our focus should be for that aviation, that collective, that, 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 that resource, let's say, to start.
And and just repeating conversations that we've been part of with the sustainability committee and in developing the program for this building. I think, uh, I hope I'm representing this accurately, but I think the feeling was that there really is no. Good public meeting space in Melanoc. And, you know, other than going to the schools or something, I mean, there is, there are small spaces at the library, but I think. It's, it's not really, it's not intended to compete with anybody, but just to give the community itself. Yeah, its own feasible space that, that, you know, could hold a larger event.
Thank you, Mike.
I think this is more of a question for Jeff, but what would be the largest? Amount of passengers that could come in on a plane? What's a larger sized plane that, that you can take?
KPA, well, we get larger airplanes that take up to fifteen people, but those are private, but commercially operated. Charter flights, the, KPA runs nine passengers. There are ten passenger airplanes, but the, but takes up one of those seats. So they fly nine people. And that's our, for fire service and everything else. So nine, nine passenger airplanes are what would be operating here initially.
Thank you.
Any, uh. Michelle.
First, first time. Do we have a projected cost? For this? And is this coming out of taxpayer money or a bond or? That's something I can even ask.
You can ask, it's not applying to us for the planning board, but.
Oh, I'm curious.
Yeah, by all means.
You want to answer that, Peter?
I'm happy to. Um, I believe the estimated cost at this point is in the range of four to six million dollars. Just like the architecture work and design work that is taking place right now. It'll all be funded by grants or. Other type of philanthropic support to the project. We have no intentions of using taxpayer money for.
Thank you. Thank you for not having those intentions and for answering.
Yeah, quite welcome, Michelle.
I have a follow up question.
Yes, please.
Can I ask, um, I've always wondered anyway. How many planes come in right now?
We get around thirty five hundred planes a year.
Okay. And you make the money?
Selling fuel, selling fuel, renting hangar space. Jet fuel is a big one. Uh, hangar space, hangar lots, tie downs, uh, pilot supplies, oil filters. It's a busy little operation. Plus I've got six businesses operating out there. People restoring airplanes, people doing skydiving. Uh, scenic rides.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other questions from members of the board? Let me ask individuals from the public, just to let the individuals know. Uh, letters were sent to property owners in proximity to this proposed development. And I think there was sixteen property owners and somewhere double hits. So there was about a dozen letters sent out. But if anybody's here that, uh, received one of those letters, or if you're just here because of the interest in the subject. If you have a question, you want to speak, take a comment, do so now. Not seeing any. Yes, Michelle.
Oh, I'm old, so I don't know the answer to this. It is. I grew up next to an airport very long time ago. Do sonic booms still happen?
I don't think you have to worry about it here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
There is, there is, there's a sound that's not normal to, um, it, there was, what was it? A life flight? There was, there was, there was a jet that flew in and our building is up on Balsam Drive and we heard, I could hear it coming and I was like, boy, we, I thought I was in Portland or Bangor. But I think it's very, it's an exceptional.
See, we get a lot of airplanes in and out of town that people don't even realize they're coming and going because they land over Dolby and they take off back the same way if the wind is favoring that. Um, a lot of them don't take off over town. If the wind is calm, then they go the other way towards East Melanoc. So you don't, you don't hear them coming and going, even though there's airplanes coming and going regularly. Um, if the wind is blowing hard enough that they do take off towards the mill site. When the wind is blowing, it helps them get higher and you don't hear it because the airplane is higher off the ground. So it, we shouldn't hear a whole bunch more noise than we really do now, honestly.
Thank you.
Any more comments from individuals in attendance? There was a comment made about the parking lot and the, uh, the amount of impervious surface. There's a lot of impervious surface out there already. Jeff, you might want to comment about that, but when I looked at the plot plan. Essentially, the proposed parking area is really not that large after I put a scale on it. It's only about a third of an acre or somewhere thereabouts.
No, and I was going to bring that up during the discussion about the impervious area. I have several hundred thousand square feet of impervious area that can be removed. So there's a lot of unused pavement out there from the old infrastructure. There's a hundred and fifty feet by a thousand feet on the, would be the Katan cabins end that could go away. There's the old parking apron that we don't utilize anymore, that helicopter pad area that we talked about. None of those will be used in the future development. So we have thousands of square feet of impervious that could be traded for this, this area. And having worked on a few of these grants before, that's, that's an important issue, same as wetlands.
All right, thank you. When this project was first discussed, uh, and a follow up, a prelude to this meeting. Uh, I sent letters to the police chief, the fire chief sits on this committee. I also sent a letter to the, uh. Waste treatment plant, the superintendent and the, uh, public works director. Just to get feedback on this project. And if there's something that we're not thinking of. That they would pick up on because of their responsibilities, that's where I'm coming from. I heard back from, uh. The wastewater treatment plant, it didn't believe, they didn't believe that there was any difficulties. There's already a building there. Not as if this is a, a new structure per se. There's a, a letter here from, uh, Chief McDonough, essentially giving a positive, uh. Comments to the facility and that he indicates that his, uh. Department can handle, uh, safety issues that would be relevant to this project. Again, it's an existing structure, but it's kind of increasing size. Uh, he didn't indicate that's going to be a problem. I sent a letter to the public works director. I haven't heard back yet from that individual. But I'm not anticipating problems, but I just want to let people know that things do, uh. Is that gentleman Dupery? Oh, do, do you wish to comment? No. Okay, uh, just that, uh, we, we try to make sure that. We're dealing with things as they unfold rather than hindsight being twenty twenty when we realize we did something that we. Could have avoided and that's the intent here is that we cover the bases. Jeff, do you have a comment?
I do. Um, a lot of this is going on in conjunction with the, the property being purchased that the fire station is going to go on. That's going to allow us fire access. On site because the road, we're planning on a road behind the fire department to reach the runway. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of other things going on that, that we are in the works, you know, we have in the works, I should say. So it's a, it's a, it's a big cumulative plan that's coming together. Basically spearheaded by the sustainability committee. So, and they wanted it to be a multi-use building. So that, that, that's really the plan moving forward.
All right, thank you. Uh, there was also, uh, yes, Dave, go ahead.
Is that old tower that's on the built property? That building is clearly not.
No, it's, it's clearly marked on this, on the charts and the pilots are aware of it and it's nowhere's near the problem that the stacks used to be. As far as I know, Burkefield is still using that as a weather data collector.
All right, thank you. Charlie has a question, please.
Jeff, can I tell me here? There's a square on this drawing that touch potential septic field. I was wondering what that would be. This would be on town sewer, John.
No, there, there is no town sewer out there. It doesn't go out there. We have to have a septic system. There's a septic system there now. It's just going to need to be relocated.
You're talking about the building that's there now is on a septic system?
It is.
How far from the town sewer?
Oh, yeah, yeah, at least a quarter of a mile.
It stops at the grocery. It was a cemetery.
It'll have to be an upgraded. Septic field.
Yep.
License tied about it.
Right, right.
Yeah, it just surprised me.
Yeah, none of those houses out there on sewer.
Can I follow up on that, uh, aspect? This current facility is served by the Melanoc, what, uh, no.
The water it is.
The water is?
Yes.
Okay, but there's a septic system as far as dealing with waste materials. It's actually, there's a, a field on site.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep, there's a pump station there and there's, uh, two large tanks and a pump station, a lift station between the two. And a, and a leach field. Behind the, if you look when you're going by next time, Tony, right behind the. Fuel house that's out in front of the building, in front of the office building. It'll be to the north side of the building. You'll see a pipe sticking out of the ground and that's a vent for that leach field.
All right, and it's pumped from the, from the septic tank to that leach field?
Yep.
Hey, I didn't realize there was even enough gradient there.
Yep, yeah, there's a high spot there. If you look, there's a high spot next to the building.
All right.
It goes out across there towards the weather station.
All right, thank you.
So, so the existing building has a basement. So, and this new building will be just a slab on grade. So we'll be, we'll be filling in the, uh, the basement of the existing building.
All right, well, that's something that, uh, wasn't shown on the plot plan that we received because it's really just the footprint of the building and the, and the parking lot, but the. Building structure, that plot plan would indicate that it's on a slab.
The new building will be on slab. The, the, yeah, the old building, the, uh. The north, south section of the FBO building is, has a basement.
All right, and that's going to be essentially filled in, you indicated.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, we were saying that we would save probably ten feet of geothermal well if we just drilled right there. It's pretty expensive for these geothermal wells to be drilled.
Uh, one, one last thing that was mentioned was, uh, a lighting for the parking facility and, uh. Essentially not illuminating the, uh, uh, atmosphere, so to speak. But also there would be FAA regs dealing with the lighting of anything around this facility. Uh, Jeff, jump in on that.
Yeah, we have security light. We have security lights over there now and everything is all within spec. So, um, the dome type or the shielded type LED. Lights wouldn't affect the aircraft at all. That's, that's been thought of too.
All right, I, I expected that would be, uh, I'm sure the FAA is going to have a lot of input into this. Building when it does get constructed. And for the individuals that might not be aware and jump in if I'm giving things. Uh, wrong. This facility is not in the cards for construction for at least, what, a year or two?
Right.
Yeah, our reason for taking it up is, uh, that, uh, as plans move forward. It could be indicated to congressional delegation, whomever, that this matter has come before the town. Rereviewed it, the site plan review, uh, I'm assuming we'll pass it, but we'll take that up when happens. But essentially it gets that, uh, one duck in a row taken care of rather than leaving it to. Be dealt with later on. It would possibly be a, a concern to someone that might be looking for this, uh, project. Of, uh, funding and things of that nature. Or not think the town is, uh, given some review of this project and signed off on it.
The funding is usually a little more forthcoming if you have a shovel ready project. So that, that's the plan is to have this engineered, designed. Ready to go when the money is available. ready to go. When the money is available, we'll build the building.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Is there any other comments from planning board members, uh, from individuals in attendance at the meeting? Uh, David?
I, I raised a couple of questions here. I'm wondering over the butter. I wonder if they're aware that there's going to be a substantial leach field in this, that's this budget. I'm just wondering, you know, the public knows that. But with that question, I want to, you know, we got a letter here from the police department and, and it says growth in our region is essential to our continued success. I just want to parrot that. You know, I really love growth. I really think that a project like this will really help the community. And I, you know, I really believe in the future of Millinocket. But on the, that having been said, thank you for coming here. Thank you for asking for our opinions. I do have some thoughts that I want to share with, with this board that I don't want anybody think that I'm against this project at all. But what I want to talk to, talk to this planning board is about is, you know, maybe we don't have enough education. Maybe, uh, we need to have some people on this board that have a better understanding of what a planning board can do and what it can't do. What is in the public uh, domain and what isn't in the public domain? What, um, what a, a planning board should be considering and what it shouldn't be considering. Cause I brought up, and the reason for this is I've brought up a number of subjects, you know, and I, when I bring up a subject, it's because I have put some thought into it. And I assume have my ideas dismissed as that's not for our department or that's not for this board. And, you know, I guess I really need to be educated on this. And I don't think I'm the only one in the, on this board that needs to be educated on this. We don't have a whole lot of, uh, experience from the, uh, MMA, or is it MM? Main municipal association. Yeah, I, I think we really do have to look into their, their, um, opinions and have some of our own opinions up, updated. Yeah. I wholeheartedly agree, you know, and, uh, and I really should. Uh, I'm going to just go on continuing my conversations, you know, maybe we've just put too much responsibility on Tony and, you know, let him do it, get all the education. And we've just said yes. And, um, you know, I'm just, you know, trying to suggest this board that, you know, maybe we ought to, we all better get some of that education. Okay, thank you.
Can, can we get back to what we're here for?
Yeah.
We want to talk about education or we want to talk about how the planning board works. This is
No, it isn't.
We're here for this.
Tom, could you tell me where the place is?
Special meeting. If you need a meeting of the planning board to tell them if they don't know what they're doing, have that.
Yeah, no, uh, I don't want to go into that route, uh, but essentially that's where we rely on MMA to give us guidance as, as we act as a planning board to make sure that we're doing our responsibilities and acting accordingly. Uh, but as far as like a project like this, we're not going to be dictating things like lighting and so forth. FAA is going to be coming in and making sure that things are done in appropriate, uh, when airport complex and so forth. So, uh, we, we just follow, uh, state regulations as far as, uh, organizations like DEP, uh, federal FAA, any other oversight organization that would have input to a project. And if someone at federal or state level says this has to be done, we would be remiss in saying, no, we're going to do something else. We wouldn't do so. We do, uh, our part. And as far as what Tom is mentioning about, uh, as far as this project being reviewed, uh, in the zoning ordinance, section one twenty-five, one eleven is what we're going to review. Time permitting tonight, or else we'll come back and have a meeting in a couple of weeks and finish that. But essentially that's really the culmination of this project as far as, uh, review by the, by the town.
I, I would just like to apologize to the group here. But because, you know, this is our conversations we should be having and we haven't. And these conversations should be in public.
They have to be when the planning board acts.
Correct, that's why I brought it up tonight.
Are open to the public. Is there any other comments? Uh, essentially, uh, the comment that was made by Tom about, uh, reviewing this as far as, uh, site plan review, that's section one twenty-five, one eleven. Uh, I'd like to move into that. Uh, it's a quarter to seven now. Uh, we'll finish that. If we start it now, we won't finish it by seven. I just want to let people know that. Or else we'll come back, uh, another time and, and do the, uh, review of the site plan, uh, requirements. Uh, if there's any feedback, let me know. If not, we're going to start the review. But like I said, we're going to run over. Before I forget, uh, Chris, uh, Coneyfossman Officer, individuals that have not met him, he's, uh, new, uh, to the position, came on board January third, I believe. Uh, do you have any comments relative to this project and taking the site plan review application from Mr. Santar, uh, or any of the comments relative to your moving into this capacity as CEO? All right, thank you. I'm going to move into, uh, section one twenty-five, one eleven. Um, if individuals think this is going to be a boilerplate thing, it essentially is. It shouldn't be any surprise as we discuss things up to this point. This is to make sure that we got our ducks in a row, that we reviewed everything that needs discussion and that we're going to pass judgment on it based on these criteria. So if, uh, you're interested in it, fine. If you think, hey, I got other things to do. And if you wish to leave, fine too. But I'm going to move on to that. It says the planning board is reviewing projects requiring site plan approval under section, this part two. They'll make positive writing, written findings that the applicant has submitted clear and convincing evidence that. And I'll go into each of them. Adequate provision has been made for off-street parking and loading. Essentially the, uh, uh, application, actually the, the map indicates the, uh, parking thirty-eight, uh, uh, thirty-eight parking places. And I'll be candid, I haven't looked up on, on that airport, but, uh, essentially, uh, this is not Bangor International. Uh, thirty-eight parking places would be pretty, pretty minuscule, but, uh, I don't recall any requirement in the zoning ordinance for airport, parking at an airport per se. Uh, restaurants usually have, you know, tables, services, things like that. Okay, and that's how you arrived at the thirty-eight parking places? Uh, any comments, uh, relative to that?
What would the capacity event be? I'm sorry.
What I'm looking up, uh, in section one twenty-five, def sixty-four are, uh, off-street parking combinations. Uh, and I'm looking at subsection I, business and professional offices. One space for each two hundred square feet of working space. Do you have comments, uh, Mr. Santar on the size of that, uh, uh, facility, the, uh, the actual, uh, not recreation, the, uh, the actual meeting, excuse me, the event center. Thank you.
Uh, the buil- the building's roughly fifty-eight, but the event center, um, I don't have the the square footage for the room myself in my head, but it was on that program. Um, which is what we use to calculate the occupancy. If it's, if it's still up, you could, you could, uh, it's not up, okay. If you want, Tony, I can, I can, I can email you our calculations.
If you would, please.
Based on the zoning ordinance.
Jeff, can I put you on the spot? Uh, how many parking places are there at this facility today? A dozen, two dozen?
Eight.
Eight. Okay.
Be nine. I mean, it's, it's not ten. I guarantee you that.
Probably just hit the arrow, see if it forwards. Try the next one, yeah, keep going, next one. There you go. Uh, so, so we have five hundred and fifty chair as an area. It's, it's roughly nine, roughly one thousand twenty-five square feet.
And if, uh, I did my math fast, but essentially, uh, one space for every two hundred square feet of, uh, working space. You, you indicated the whole facility is fifty-six hundred square feet?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight hundred. Well, essentially one space, thirty-eight parking places, uh, are being, uh, considered. That's essentially seventy-six hundred square feet. That's beyond the, the size of the building that's being proposed.
Right, and so the zoning, I think what I read in the zoning ordinance is you take a square footage for the event space. You take a square footage for the office space. You isolate your spaces to determine the occupancy or the square, I, I think the zoning was a square footage or uh, taxing my memory now too. Um, it was, it was, it wasn't just one number for the whole building. It was, it was the function of the spaces that would generate more occupants. You'd have to have more parking lots. Right, right.
But again, I'm, I'm just looking at the subparaphrase I, dealing with business and professional offices. Uh, it's about the closest I can come.
There's, there might be, there's a section that's, I think there was a section that was about social space. Uh, somewhere in the zoning ordinance is what, what we had.
Uh, places of amusement, public assembly?
That probably was it, yeah.
One, one space for every, uh, fifty square feet of, of floor area.
Yes.
Devoted, uh, to patron use. Uh, essentially, again, that, that might be, uh, you've got fifty-eight hundred square feet, uh, for the, for the whole building.
Right, but if the, if the event center's the eleven hundred square feet, that would be twenty plus vehicles for just the event center. And then you use the collaboration, the conference room and then the offices. I, I'm, I mean, we're more than well, will, I don't, I don't know if we want to go less than thirty-eight.
I don't think we should.
Yeah.
But I mean, uh, as far as what's already been, uh, considered, I think it's adequate.
Right.
For what's being, uh, proposed here for a future facility, thirty-eight, uh, off-street parking places.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, I, I've, I've, I've mentioned this to this sustainability committee when we presented last. I just, back, back, backstory would be, I was a, I was the chair of the zoning board at the, in the, at, for the city of Portland for a year. And on the board for a couple of years. And there, my experience with the zoning board was they had a very, their zoning board, their zoning ordinance is very archaic and they've since updated it. And I commented to the sta- sustainability committee of Millinocket that if the planning board had funds in the future to hire someone to update your zoning ordinance, it would be a, a well, well, money well-spent, I think. Uh, the zoning ordinance is, is hard to read. But that said, what I was, what I interpreted through the zoning ordinances was, um, the, the social space, the office space, the business space that you mentioned at two hundred square feet. And we came up with thirty-eight and I, I'll share those, that calculation with you.
If you would, please.
Yeah, yeah. And, and while we were on the, it was the city of Portland, not that Millinocket is anywhere near the city of Portland, but they allow a certain number of off-street and then, uh, on, on street. So for the event, like when Jeff has a rally, the cars are parked down Medway Road. Um, obviously it's a nice summer day, so you can walk to the, to the airport, but we, we think there's a comment, if the, at thirty-eight, if there's a really, uh, well-attended event, people can park along the side of the road and that's considered, you know, legal, let's say, or appropriate for facilities.
Yeah, and, uh, Jeff, did you have a comment? Uh, no, I?
No, not, not really, but, uh, the way it's designed, it's always room for expansion. But, um, I hate to build it too small to start. You know, we got a, we got plans for things going and if it goes the way we hope it does, then we should have the room.
Yeah, I'm not looking to, uh, advocate for something smaller as much as making sure we got a ducks in a row for something that's proposed.
Got, yep, got enough room. Um, I, I'm pretty happy. I've been, I've been, uh, working along with Patrick on this quite a bit and I think you'll, uh, trust, I trust that you'll find that the due diligence has been done for the proposal. Uh, you'll find that, uh, he, uh, he looked into it pretty close.
A- as far as, uh, uh, truck events and things like that, truck pulling, uh, that's not being considered today. Uh, and as far as this, this facility, but essentially, uh, the intent here is to make sure that enough accommodation is made for off-street parking. So it's not overflowing into the street.
Right.
On public, uh, rights of way that, uh, on public rights of way, that should be considered now, and I think, I'm asking this to the board members, I think 38 places, spaces is going to be sufficient, and Mr. Santar can supply that information, that'll back it up, and I'll put it into the, into the findings of this, of this board on the site plan review. Do you have a comment, Patrick?
No, I would, I mean, I, I, I've been working, I've been doing this for a long time, and it's hard when, and Tom can appreciate this, we'll, we'll, we'll go back and forth over a code. And, and when I was on the zoning board, I felt as though there's a gray area and everyone, and there's a lot of people who think it's black and white. Is it realistic that 38 cars will show up to an event with only one person in it, in the car? I mean, I look at practicality aspects of things. I, I think if you have an event center that has 100 people, chances are you probably could get 50 cars, if not more. We're a very one-horse society kind of, you know, unless you have a partner that you're going to an event with, we all like. So, that practical aspect, sometimes I side towards that, but when the code says, you know, this is what we had derived from the code, I've, and like Jeff said, we don't want to build it small and then have to ask for more money later to build a bigger parking lot, so maybe we'll, we'll revisit it, we'll look at it and say, is, would it make sense to add, you know, a few more so that we get up to 40, 44, I, I don't know, should we do 50? If you have a direction that you know from the zoning that we should follow, that would be helpful as well. It's an interpretation oftentimes.
Yeah, looking at it from the aspect you indicate about a public recreation area versus a professional building per se, obviously, there's a difference there by a factor of four. Now, one says, you know, one space for every 50 square feet, the other one says one space for every 200 square feet. This is not a, a, a public facility, like a theater, if you will. This is an airport terminal, and there will be people coming and going, and there might be a facility, a project that does take place there. It's just to make sure that we've got enough coverage to, to deal with what is expected. If you would send me that information, that I would appreciate. If there's other feedback from individuals on the board on this one aspect on off-street parking, speak up, please.
Well, and Tony, I think it's a, it just jogged my mind, and then granted, it took this long to get here, I would talk with Jeff. So if, if we were able to secure an airline, how many cars are actually parked in the parking lot when someone's going somewhere and then returning? I mean, that's a, that's a calculation that we don't have in the zoning ordinance. So I, when, when, when we went up to Prescott to visit the airport, there were some cars that were probably there, like, like a long-term parking. Is that long-term? Is it a week? Is it two weeks? Is it a couple of days? How much do we have to anticipate for that?
This might be a Jeff question, but I don't know if it makes sense to sort of cross that bridge when we get there, see if, you know, because you don't want more parking to maintain and plow and take care of, you know, than you need, but you know, there is plenty of land to, to create more parking if that is needed, it seems.
Yeah.
The cost, right.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is to just reiterate that we got 38 parking places considered for this project. There seems to be some ambiguity that 38 spaces is sufficient, it might be overly done, but might not be a net, a need, a minimum need, but I'd, I'd like to just leave that open and move on. Yes, Michelle? It's, it's number one, but yes, that's what I'm saying, is that we're going to get some information. No, we're not going to skip it. What, what we will do is review our requirements, the zoning ordinance, which has some flexibility based on what's being proposed versus a recreational facility or professional building facility. Obviously, there's a difference there, yes.
Code enforcement officer shall prescribe the number, which in no case will be less than an adequate number to provide. But if it's not listed, and F what is not listed, so the code enforcement officer could settle this question.
I'll put it on you, Chris, but I'd rather that we get something else that doesn't put you on the spot.
And would traffic movement be going, it's doing the same?
Say it again, please.
In this, in, in this decision, right, would traffic movement, the ease of traffic movement be in the same consideration?
No, this is off-street parking per se. Access is another aspect of this, like, like we dealt with the apartment complex. Essentially, we'll, we'll move on and leave A as an undecided requirement. B is adequate provision has been made for traffic movement of all types, including pedestrian into, out of, and within the proposed project, the board shall consider traffic movement both on the site and off the site, and making the termination under this criteria. Essentially, this terminal building exists functioning, it's going to be a larger in size, it's going to be possibly some commercial area that would serve this facility, but it's been indicated that that would be a nine, a nine-person plane. I don't see that we're going to have something, if this was a greenfield facility, we'd be flying in the dark, if you will. Don't mean to be funny with an airport being considered here, but essentially, with the existing of airport being there, I would say that B is already covered as far as egress, ingress to the facility, and I don't think pedestrian traffic is going to be a big factor.
Agreed.
I'm commenting, and if there's others on board that wishes to speak. Okay, C, any traffic increase attributable to the proposed project will not result in unreasonable congestion or unsafe conditions on a road and the vicinity of the proposed development. Again, I think we've covered the bases as far as there's an existing structure in place, and it's already serving the community. Anybody wishes to discuss that further? Also, I'm going to move on. D, the proposed project will be built on soil types which are suitable to the nature of the project, and that adequate provision has been made to avoid erosion, contamination of groundwater, surface waters, interference with adjacent land, overburdening of natural and artificial drainage systems, and/or other adverse air effects of inadequate drainage. Essentially, the ground is relatively flat, there's an existing facility there. I don't think that's going to be an issue, that's me speaking, if there's someone on the board that thinks we've got pursue things more so in that regard, they'll speak up.
Can I? It's totally Sam, yep. Can I add to that, just for the sake of conversation? I participate in a stormwater pollution prevention program through the DEP, and I do outflow testing for anything that goes on over there for stormwater outflows that we have, so I keep a log of all that, so it's just part of what I do over there.
As far as this facility is being considered, there's already two runways of considerable size, impervious surface and, and drainage and so forth, so I would imagine that there's a
There, there's a very elaborate drainage system over there now already, and we have three outflows from the airport facilities, proper, and those are all tested by me and reported to the DEP.
Yeah.
So, the, the, there's, that stuff is all in place.
All right, thank you. Any more comments on that section D I just read?
You want me to repeat that? I just want to express my concerns about 100 people at an event is going to need an adequate leach field, and that's, I don't see it in the print here, so I'm just wanting to express a concern about it.
Essentially, Mike already addressed that early in the evening, an onsite inspector is going to have to review that and identify and determine the size of the leach field that's going to be required for this facility. This, this board won't be doing that, but it will come under DEP direct.
And we should voice our concern here about it.
Well, not about concern as much as being aware that there'll be onsite disposal of waste.
Yes.
No other comments? I'm going to move on. E, adequate provision has been made to locate and design proposed outdoor display and/or storage areas so as to avoid any safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic on or off the site. I don't see that as being relevant to this, there's not going to be outdoor display areas per se. No. I'm going to move on. Okay. F, adequate vision has been made to avoid any hazard to travel on public or private ways, or any glare or other nuisances to the use of adjoining public or private property. Essentially, the FAA is going to deal with the lighting and so forth, that's going to be added to this, to this area. I don't think there's anything else, Jeff, if I'm not missing something.
No, and I'm also very cognizant of what's going on over there as far as the neighbors are concerned. When we put up the garage to put the snow removal equipment in, it was designed with LED lighting, bright LED lighting that was going to be on all night. They were on photo eyes, and I insisted that they be on a switch, so we wouldn't be a nuisance, nuisance to the neighbors. So, no, the lighting and the glare, the windows and everything that's designed is, yes, FAA regulations apply, but also I'm very aware of the neighbors.
Yeah, but there's no residential buildings or ownership on that side of Medway Road.
Not on that side, no, it's all on the opposite side of the street, but it's close.
Yes, it's close, but essentially, that the lighting that's going to be added for the, for the parking facility is going to be oriented downward, though it's not illuminating
Right.
the ambient air. Okay, thank you. G, adequate provision has been made with regard to buffers, screening, landscaping, and the preservation enhancement of significant natural features. I don't see this as being applicable, this facility exists. There's no shrubbery that's going to be added, there's, there's, it's not any different than any other airport that I've seen in this, in this state. Jump in if anybody sees otherwise, then we, we're going to move on. H, adequate vision has been made to avoid unreasonable adverse effects in the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, rare and irreplaceable natural areas, existing uses, air quality, water quality, or other natural resources within the town or in neighboring towns. And we're not going that far, but I don't think that's applicable to what we're talking about here. I'm going to move on. I, whenever a project is situated in whole or in part within 250 feet horizontal distance of the normal high-water mark, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, there is no high water anywhere near this, certainly not within 250 feet. Jeff, if you're aware of something, speak up. J, adequate provision has been made to prevent any significant adverse effect upon the public health, safety, or general welfare of the neighborhood or community. I don't see anything that's going to be affected in an adverse way by this, but I'm asking that in the sense of, if people, if people see otherwise, speak up now, but I don't see this as being anything that's going to generate any problems. So, I'm going to move on. K, adequate provision has been made to prevent any undue adverse effect upon the property values of adjacent or nearby properties. That's very subjective, but I don't see this new terminal and the increased size of the parking area as damaging property values on the other side of the road. I'm going to move on. Okay. Any, L, excuse me, adequate provision has been made to avoid any undue burden on municipal services. Essentially, this is the reason that the, the letters were sent out to the Public Works Director, to the wastewater treatment plant, which I found out now from the discussion tonight, is not even going to be a factor as far as the existing structure and the proposed structure, it's going to be an onsite leach field dealing with that waste. And Jeff, did you say that there's a, a service for water coming to this facility today? Or it is, and that's going to continue? All right, thank you. Any comments from the board members? Okay, as I'm going through this, if there's anyone in the public that says, whoa, speak up, please, or raise your hand. M, adequate provision has been made to assure the proper operation of the proposed business, businesses, or activity on the site through the provision of adequate and appropriate utilities, drainage, water supply, furor's disposal, solid waste disposal, access, parking, loading, and other necessary site improvements. The thing that's still pending is, is the parking, we'll get information from that, but the other criteria that were mentioned in that section M, again, it's an existing structure, it's going to be changed, it's going to be increased in size, but I'm not seeing it as a a matter that needs further discussion. Not hearing opposition, I'm going to move on. N, adequate provision has been made to assure that proposed development conforms in all aspects with the provisions of this Part II. This Part II refers to the document, the zoning ordinance, and there'd be a site land use regulations in here. Essentially, without going through that in its entirety, I don't see this, this is not a greenfield proposal, this is an existing facility, it will be increased in size, but I don't see anything new on the horizon that's not already occurring, maybe at a smaller scale with the existing airport facility. Any comments? Oh, the applicant has adequate technical or financial capability to carry out the project as proposed and to meet any conditions of approval applied by the planning board. Essentially, this project is not being, the applicant is Mr. Santar, and he's not developing this, this is something that's, he's getting, he's being a provider of a service, drafting these, this facility, an architectural engineer, if I'm misstating the title, sir, speak up. But essentially, if this project gets constructed, it's going to be with grants from congressional delegation or maybe other sources, and it's something in the future, and it's not going to happen without Congressional delegation or maybe other sources, and it's something in the future, and it's not gonna happen without money's forthcoming. It's not that anybody that's proposing this site plan, Mr. Santar, the, the individual. Is stating this and he's obligation, uh, obligated to, you know, indicate, I have the financial capacity to do this. He's not inferring that, and that's not, uh, being considered here. As far as I'm, I'm concerned, this section O, which is the last section in this, uh, in this criteria, is just not applicable. What I'd like to do is, uh, we reviewed, uh, sections in one-twenty-five, one-eleven. Uh, the question about, uh, A, the adequate provision for off-street parking is still, uh. Not settled, but everything else was reviewed, and, uh, what I want is, if someone wants to make it. Uh, a motion to, uh, accept a review of this section, one-twenty-five, one-eleven, uh, which is the site plan review criteria. Uh, we'll take a vote, uh, and it would indicate that section A, uh, dealing with off-street parking is, is still undecided. Go move. A motion is made by Tom to accept. Motion is made by Tom. And, uh, seconded by Michelle Anderson, to essentially, uh, accept the, uh, review of the criteria that we discussed tonight. Which is sections A through O of section one-twenty-five, one-eleven, and section A is still pending on off-street parking. But, uh, we reviewed the other sections, and we feel like the project is properly reviewed. And if we approve this, essentially, we've done our responsibilities to make sure that the, the project is. Well-planned and can be carried through to completion. Which essentially, like I said, is gonna necessitate outside sources of revenue that's still forthcoming, or. We got a motion pending, any discussion? Okay, a decision on the motion, please, those in favor? Anybody opposed? Go move. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Go move. Made by Tom, second? Yeah, you, you did. Oh, yes. Okay, uh, uh, essentially, there's been a motion made and, and, uh, second, uh, adjourning this meeting at, uh, seven-twenty-three. Uh, unless there's opposition, we are adjourned. I thank you all for coming.